Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council. It's March 1st, 2021. We welcome you. Quick reminder to please silence your phones during our meeting. Tonight, we will begin with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance given by Mr. Rozell. Please, your.
God of giving and love, thank you for the gift of our community, the opportunity to serve Troy and speak, help us to act with integrity and humility, and do all the spirit of open minds, hearts, and goodwill. Grant us to speak with clarity and kindness. Kindle in the in the hearts of all who are here and listening, a spirit of service. Guide us to be leaders that the people of Troy deserve. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to agree with us and to, and all finally grant us the strength, presence, and joy of helping to build community worthy of all people. All these things we ask in your name, Lord Father, who are infinitely good and abundant and merciful. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. This is Knight. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips. Mr. Twilliger.
Here.
Mr. Seaver.
Here.
Mrs. C. Here. Mr. Rozell.
Here.
Mr. Twist.
Here.
Mr. Swazer.
Here.
Mr. Allen.
Here.
Mr. Schilling.
Here.
Move to excuse Mr. Phillips. It has been moved to excuse Mr. Phillips, but Mr. Schwizer seconded by Mr. Seaver. This is Knight. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. C. Yes. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips is excused.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read a summary of the minutes of the February 16th, 2021 meeting of Troy City Council?
Minutes of council, February 16th, 2021, committee reports personnel provided a report regarding an appointment to the Human Relations Commission, which was approved. Ordinance number 08, 2021, declaring municipally owned real property as surplus was given first reading following various comments council during 7:18 PM.
Thank you. This is Knight. Council members stacked on the minutes. It's been moved to approve the minutes by Mrs. Sne, seconded by Mr. Schilling. This is Knight. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. C. Yes. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We have four committee reports tonight from two separate committees. We will begin with the Community and Economic Development Committee with Mrs. C and her three reports.
Thank you, President Letts. The Community and Economic Development Committee met on February 22nd to consider authorizing the city to administer a community housing improvement program known as CHIP. This would provide for the city to receive any funds related to the program. It's a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into a Housing Revolving Fund Administration Agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency regarding the city administering a CHIP program. If required, we support the auditor establishing a budget fund for the program. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Sne. Are there any comments or questions on the report? Seeing none, Mrs. Sne, please go ahead.
Thank you. The committee met on February 22nd to consider the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that council accept the dedication of 1.1644 acres of right of way, which is the cul-de-sac known as Green Court and part of the north side of West Stanfield Road between South Stanfield Road and Washington Road. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, accepting the dedication of the 1.1644 acres of right of way, which is Green Court and along the north side of part of West Stanfield Road as recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Sne. Are there any comments or questions on the report from council? Seeing none, Mrs. Sne, please go ahead with your last report.
Thank you. The committee met on February 22nd to review a recommendation from the Troy Planning Commission that the final record plan of the Redwood Troy Plan Development Residential be approved as it conforms to the approved general plan and final development plans. This committee supports the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission and recommends that legislation be prepared to approve the final record plan of the Redwood Troy Plan Development Residential, respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Sne. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll go to the Safety and Health Committee and Mr. Twilliger.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met on February 22nd regarding establishing a designated outdoor refreshment area known as DORA. A new DORA application was submitted on February 9th of 2021. The committee believes that the current application addresses many of the concerns noted in the 2020 application recommendation. This committee supports the establishment of a DORA as contained in the February 9th application. It is the recommendation of this committee that the legislation be prepared to approve the application of the designated outdoor refreshment area. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Schilling, and myself, John Twilliger as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Twilliger. Are there any comments or questions from council members on the report? Seeing none, we'll move on to citizen comments for items on the agenda. We have five ordinances and one resolution on the agenda this evening. If you wish to address council on any of those items, I invite you to come to the podium, give your name and address, and you have two minutes to address council. Mr. Kirby will be our timekeeper. Seeing none, we'll move into resolutions. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R. 7, 2021?
Resolution number R. 7, 2021, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into a Housing Revolving Loan Fund Administration Agreement with the State of Ohio Development Services Agency regarding community housing impact and preservation CHIP program. This would be for calendar year 2021, first reading.
Second, move to suspend. It's been moved to suspend by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Schwizer. Mr. Twist.
I'm sorry. But they're my boys.
This is Knight. Will you please call the roll?
Mrs. C.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes. The three reading rule has been suspended.
Moved to adopt.
Second. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Schwizer, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Any final comments or questions? This is Knight. Please call the roll.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. C. Yes. Resolution adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance 08, 2021?
Ordinance number 08, 2021, ordinance declaring municipally owned real property is no longer needed for municipal purposes and authorizing the sale of such excess property. This is a small parcel of Archer Park. This is the second reading.
Second. It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. C. Yes. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Three reading rule has been suspended.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Any final comments or questions? This is Knight. Please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. C. Yes. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance 09, 2021?
Ordinance number 09, 2021, ordinance accepting the dedication of right of way associated with the final plat of Green Court in the City of Troy, Ohio. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission, first reading.
We'll suspend. Second. It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schwizer, seconded by Mr. Seaver. This is Knight. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. C. Yes. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes. Second.
Three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Twist. Any final comments or questions? This is Knight. Please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. C. Yes. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Can you please read the next ordinance?
Ordinance number 010, 2021, ordinance accepting the final record plan of the Redwood Troy Plan Development Residential. This is then recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the first reading.
Let's council.
Move to suspend.
Move to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schwizer, seconded by Mr. Schilling. This is Knight. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. C. Yes. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes. Move to adopt.
Second. The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Schwizer, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Are there any final comments or questions? This is Knight. Please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. C. Yes. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance 011, 2021?
Ordinance number 011, 2021, an ordinance creating a designated outdoor refreshment area known as the downtown Troy designated outdoor refreshment area and enacting regulations. This will approve what is known as the DORA. This is the first reading.
I do believe that our law at the work session was decided that this will go to at least a second reading.
It's required to by law, yes.
So this will stand as the first reading. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance 012, 2021?
Ordinance number 012, 2021, an ordinance vacating access easement no longer needed for public purpose located west of Cherry Street between West Franklin Street and West Canal Street in the City of Troy, Ohio. This has been previously recommended by committee and recommended by the Troy Planning Commission, the first reading.
Council members stacked on the.
Move to suspend. Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schwizer, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. C. Yes. Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Mr. Stain.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes. Move to adopt. Second.
Three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Schwizer, seconded by Mr. Twilliger or Mr. Rozell? Any final comments or questions? This is Knight. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Mr. Stain.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. C. Yes. Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We've extended the resolutions and ordinance as part of our meeting this evening. We move on to communications and announcements. And Mrs. Knight, are there any?
Just a reminder of filing the financial disclosure statement and then the letter that was distributed to council regarding DORA.
This time, we have a presentation from Mrs. Kelly Snyder, the Executive Director of the Troy Rec. Mrs. Snyder. Please come to the podium and.
So I'm here, I want to present a update on the Troy Rec. and what we've offered to the community this past year. First of all, on behalf of the Board of Directors, the staff, and all of our participants, I just want to thank the council, Mayor Oda, and all city staff for your support throughout the years. But particularly this past year, it was challenging for everyone and for us as well. So we certainly appreciate the continued support of the Troy Rec. For over eight years, the rec has served as a community recreation center with primary emphasis on youth. That mission really has never changed, although in 2020 it looked quite different. In the past, our building was bustling with activity from 7:00 AM in the morning until 9:10 at night. Unfortunately, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, that just wasn't the case this past year. As everyone is well aware, in March of 2020, we were forced to stop all activities within our rec center, which included our Reborn After School daycare, our Smart Start preschool, as well as our sixth through 12th grade day. No more birthday parties, no more private Walden dance lessons, no rec dances, movie nights. None of that was allowed in the health state. Our Reborn After School daycare just celebrated 26 years of operation. They offer affordable and safe childcare for poor citizens. After the shutdown, our daycare staff continued to meet with their participants via Zoom just to allow some interaction for the kids under such really strange times. It was a small relief for the parents to have an hour or so of downtime while our staff continued to play games versus. We're in our ninth year of operations with Smart Start preschool, and we remain at full capacity of 48 students with a waiting list. The shutdown was very trying for our preschool teachers as well. They continue to teach via Zoom. Their practice of curriculum for parents to use with their students at home. Their goal was to stay connected and assist the parents in preparing their students to be kindergarten ready in the fall. During this time, we could not in good conscience charge these families for our services. So many were struggling with reduced hours or unemployment. And thanks to the generosity of the Troy Foundation, the Duke Foundation, the Robinson Fund of the Troy Foundation, we were able to keep our staff on cable during the four month shutdown. Many of them changed roles during that time, but we value our people, and we did not want to lose them to other positions during the extended wait. Also need to extend gratitude to our incredible Board of Directors for their wisdom and resilience during an unprecedented time. They were steady, and they were a great source of support to me during the last year. They decided that we did not apply for the PPP loans, but weathered the storm without taking on debt. That proved to be a solid decision as we present eligible for care back grants as well as Ohio payroll tax funds. Most of what we do and what most people think of when they think of the rec is here to order six to 12 grade students who normally drop into the rec and then go to the variety after school. Of course, that was a lot different in 2020 as well. We know we're a safe landing spot for kids and sometimes the only safe spot where they feel comfortable enough to open up and share the day with us. And honestly, during the shutdown, we were very worried that some of the kids were probably not being properly cared for, and most of them were not doing their schoolwork. We started a virtual rec program as a check-in with our participants. We tutored and checked in with over 100 kids during the last few months of school. It was an opportunity to make sure our kids were okay and also to offer resources to their families that they might not otherwise be aware of. Our weekend bag of supplements that has been in place for three years. During the pandemic, we grew that program to be open to any family in Miami County with children that had a need for food support. At the height of the pandemic, we were sending out over 250 bags of food weekly. We saw a lot of families that had younger children that were truly suffering and didn't know where to turn. We were so humble and grateful that we were able to offer just a small amount of assistance. We'd often send home flyers with food distribution information or other resources in hope that the families would find some relief. Kind of funny during the whole day, you know, there was a lot of organizations that extended help and extended just, you know, we have this, you need it. And I remember Edison State, Michigan College, had pallets of toilet paper. And they extended that and said, do you want some of this? And so we were able to send home toilet paper during, you know, when it was hard to find toilet paper. We could send that home with food bags. And so many parents came up later and said, thank you so much. We appreciate that. It's just kind of a funny little thing that's just not something you would expect to be, things people would be thankful for if they were. Also during this time, we partnered with Lincoln Community Center and Chorsin Schools to serve lunches for for spring break when the schools were shut down. And then again during the whole summer for our summer lunch program. Our game room transformed into a main food pantry for four months. Between March 13th and December 31st, we served 4,037 lunches, 1,327 snack bags, and 2,359 bags of supplements. It was completely out of our element or scope of knowledge, and I have a huge appreciation for those that do this on a regular and were large scale like Bill. You guys are heroes. During the summer, we partnered with the Troy Miami County Public Library and Lincoln Community Center to offer an alternative to our usual programming. All three of the directors of those organizations spoke often and determined that we could not do what we normally do with our summer program. We decided to collaborate and offer packets of activity with Facebook videos to complement those activities. The program was entitled Imagine, Move, Explore. Each of those organizations provided content each week that participants would then work on. It was a great way for us to serve the community, offer some fun for the kids. It's kind of funny that we had all talked about collaborating in the past, but never fully committed to doing it. The pandemic forced us into that collaboration, and we all agreed it was a great success and are looking forward to continued sharing of ideas and opportunities. So we finally opened that up to our kids on July 13th, and that was a wonderful day. For the kids and for the staff, we were so glad to finally be open. There's still challenges that we face, but what's truly encouraging is our kids. They're just as fun, as funny, engaging, and smart. And we know we're still needed. They need a place to go. We're seeing more kids every day, and we're almost back up to our pre-COVID numbers in the game room, physically distanced as much as possible, of course. In the packet that was handed out to you the past, I've listed all the activities and all of the organizations that we've been able to have in our building. And unfortunately, there's a lot of red on there for items that were canceled. Organizations were able to be in our building because it wasn't allowed. So we're hopeful that next year's reports will be full of events, rentals, and activities, and they will reflect the whole progress 2021. And also, this is kind of as a note on that last page, our funding changed by this. And I have on there the 2019 findings versus the 2020 findings, just as an comparison. In the past, we have been able to self-fund at plus to 65%. This past year with all the shutdowns, no rental income, no daycare income, no preschool income. For the majority of the year, our self-funding reduced down to 46%. But our grants and our other donations went up considerably. That other donation figure is at 7.5%. That was individuals and truly the small businesses. We had a huge outpouring of love and care from the small businesses who ran their own little small fundraisers, even though they were hurting themselves, they still saw the need to support the nonprofits. And so that funding was a surprise and very welcome. And so I just encourage everyone to make sure to support your little small businesses, because they were the ones that kept us going. It wasn't the big, large corporations, but our little home house, small businesses that really stepped up for us. So again, thank you all for every year of funding, giving us some funding, because it really does help us make it through the year. And I welcome any of you that come by and for a tour. If you haven't been there in a few years, it's changed. It doesn't look like it did when you were here. So I want you to come here and give you a tour. So welcome any questions that you have.
Do we have any questions for Kelly?
I have a question. As the preschool restriction of the number of students just due to the facility size, the number of teachers you have, or like, how big's the waitlist? Is it 300, 10, 5?
We.
Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, sure. I'm not sure how many they have on the waitlist right now, but on just a normal year, we probably have 10 to 12 every way for each class. We have four classes. But the restriction of size for us is due to our facility size and our student.
To teachers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kelly. We have the comments.
Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Tiddrick. Just a couple of announcements, just to focus on your items of interest. Dimehill facility did open today. It's now open for the season, believe it or not. We are finally into March. Same hours as we had last year, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, 11 to 7, and Saturday from 9 to 3. It's closed on Sundays and Wednesdays. We also have spring cleanup going on at the Two Cemeteries, Riverside and Rose Hill. You can clean up your items through the middle of March, March 15th, and then start putting new decorations up April 15th. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kirby.
I have nothing, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. Kirby, City Auditor, Mr. Freegley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Freegley. Twenty council members have any comments this evening? Mr. Schilling.
I'd like to get a shout out to our Streets Department. South Stanfield Road took a beating this year. And potholes developed the size of cars. And the first decent day, you know, the road crews were out trying to repair the road, and they worked about two days on that, and there's still some more work to do. But it's nice to know that they prioritize and, you know, try to take care of South Stanfield. I really, you know, it's a very busy street, and of course, I live out there, and I appreciate the efforts that they have put forth to do that.
I noticed we have some new microphones, and I'm glad to hear that. And I've actually received notices today that we can be heard better on Facebook. So I know that was discussed at the last meeting, and I appreciate city putting better technology out there for that purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. Any other questions?
Mr. Twist.
Patrick, on the Kid or Ditch modeling rehabilitation, someone just asked, when are we expecting that they get all that information back to then have the public meeting? Is that summertime or what's the?
No, I anticipated probably be later this spring.
Okay.
We're still compiling all the information. We've got a lot of good feedback, pictures, and comments from the residents, and they're compiling it right now.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Tiddrick. Any other comments, questions from council members? Any comments or questions from city staff in the audience? I did receive one citizen comment. It was asked to be read this evening. This is from Mrs. Nancy France, who lives at 820 Kyle Court here in Troy. I find it very offensive that the City of Troy does not follow the requirements given to us by our governor and the Miami County Health Commissioner. They're trying to help us find the light at the end of the tunnel. Troy feels that they are much more informed and are more important and therefore justified to do a better job ignoring the mandates of the governor and commissioner. I guess you, the leaders of our community, do not need the vaccine because you feel no threat to get COVID. This will be good for the rest of us who are working to find an opportunity to get the vaccine. I would also like to address council and the mayor regarding DORA. How can you honestly think it is wise for citizens to carry alcoholic drinks around the streets of downtown Troy? What kind of examples does this send to our families who take their children downtown, to the students using the rec, and having our police department to keep the drinkers from over-inviting? It was voted down once, so you have to adjust it and give it another chance. No is never enough. Question mark. It is not important what other cities are doing. What is important is what we're doing in Troy. Your elected officials need to remember that you're put in office by a majority. Assume you will want your office again. Again, that is from Nancy France, 820 Kyle Court, Troy, Ohio. Well, now open up the meeting for other citizen comments. If you have anything that you'd like to address council on, you are more than welcome to come forward. Please give your name and address after your lecture. You can take as much time as you wish to consume.
Hi, my name is Andrea Keller, and I'm the Executive Director of Troy.
Hi, my name is Andrea Keller and I'm the Executive Director of Troy Main Street, 405 Southwest Public Square. I just wanted to follow up on just one thing about the DORA. Again, Troy Main Street is in full support of the DORA. We've been working with our downtown businesses to get feedback from them as well. Mr. Rozell had asked at the committee meeting, how many of our businesses would participate in the DORA by either putting a stick on their door saying that they're welcoming DORA drinks or saying that they serve DORA drinks? And I reached out to them. I have spoken to 29 businesses who are excited about that opportunity. And I have four businesses that were not interested in the DORA. So I just wanted to give you all that update. People received all of the information that I've received as far as letters from businesses in support or against. And so you should all have that. But I just wanted to say, if anybody has any questions regarding Troy Main Street or any of the downtown businesses about DORA within the next week before you guys vote on the official DORA, please reach out to me. And I'm just very thankful for the committee that met last week and just want to say thank you for listening to our businesses and seeing how you thought we considered the DORA. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Anyone else in the audience who's to ask, please? Saying none, this will adjourn our meeting of Troy City Council. Our next council meeting will be March 15th, 2021, 7 o'clock right here. Thank you for attending.